Good evening, Mrs. Pomelli, members of the Central Admission Staff and Board Members. I'm Jocelyn Pleben, I'm the Vice President for Student Council, and it is my pleasure to update you all on the evening of the evening on this exciting and eventful month we have had and have come in for Jackson Memorial High School. To start things off, we are near the end of our positive winter. I am happy to report the tremendous start to the semester. Students and staff are working hard every day, and we look forward for the results of their hard work. We recently just had the underclassmen go over the presentation process for their scheduled meetings for the next school year. We have our spring break coming around the corner, which is an exciting break which starts on March 29th, a wonderful time for the students and staff for a quick recharge before we go for the hard stretch of the school year. Before a break, such events will occur to add excitement to our school year. First off, we have our spring musical Mary Poppins on March 8th, 9th, and 10th. Being a part of the development of the sets and as well in the cast, I can say this will be an amazing show with a great turnout to come. We have an amazing amount of talented students involved in this production, from singers, dancers, actors, and the painters and builders. They give all their best and put an amazing show for our community. We are proud of these students for their hard work and dedication, who have put in on all their time and hard work for something they love. Also on March 8th, we have our Battle of the Classes from 6 to 8. This competition brings our students together from all grade levels that showcases their talents and teamwork, a fantastic event that truly brings the school spirit and shows our community we hold at JHS. I would also like to congratulate the JHS chess team for being Ocean County Champions. Now, as winter sports come to an end, all of these sports go into their state championships, and I would like to just recognize these astounding athletes we have at the school. With our basketball players, wrestlers, swimmers in their track and field on all these just winter sports, we recognize their hard work and outstanding athletes. All of these teams have an amazingly strong season. We're excited to see how our spring sports come out. As the weather starts getting warm, we look forward for the baseball, softball, lacrosse, track and field, tennis, volleyball, and golf teams. Having those seasons, and we wish them the best of luck, confident it will make us proud. We also look forward to having an early go for our student faculty basketball game, which is a fun and enjoyable experiment for both students and staff to strengthen our community at JHS even more. Next up, we have our March into Wellness coming up. We prioritize the mental health and emotional well-being of our students in our school. We have a Spirit Week Therapy Dog Visit and having the JHS Jack Paul's Prevention Club present Student Wellness Resource Fair on Wednesday, March 6th. They're providing local resources and making it a great opportunity for students. Then within a couple of few weeks, we have our DECA, EPILA, and Mother Congress chapters who will be attending their state competitions throughout New Jersey. We would like to say how proud we are of these students who are involved in these business clubs. A big important time is coming up for our seniors. Regular decisions from colleges are coming around the corner, and our seniors start hearing back from more schools they apply to. We wish all our seniors the best of luck. We know they will do and go do amazing things their post-high school lives. We're extremely proud of their hard work and what they have been accomplishing throughout these four years. Addition to our seniors waiting to hear back, they are currently submitting applications for the local scholarship, which these awards will be given out June 5th here at JHS. In closing, I would like to thank Mrs. Pomelli, the Board of Education, once again for continuing to support us. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak tonight.
Excellent report, Jocelyn, and it was good to see you again. It was nice to meet with you and the Student Council last week and hear about all the wonderful activities you have planned for the rest of the school year. It was a pleasure. So, from Liberty Tonight, Jose.
Good evening, Superintendent Pomelli, Board of Education members and guests. I hope everyone's having a great month. I appreciate the platform that you grant us to offer updates on our school. The link between the community and Liberty is what makes us special. As a way to commemorate Black History Month, every morning, our day stars were a highlight of one trailblazer and their story of how they inspire change. Additionally, the Royal Capa Honor Society created a unique display in the main hallway that they named Periodic Table of Black History. It includes names, faces, and facts of prominent leaders that deserve recognition. It has encouraged conversation and opened people's eyes to stories that sometimes have been lost over time. The effort is appreciated and has had an impact on many of us, reminding us we all have a story to tell. Other clubs have also been busy trying to ensure a positive climate. The National Honor Society has designed in-home motivational posters around the halls as a way to uplift spirits and remind people they are good enough. FPLA has also been active. Additionally, their members took part in a regional summit at King University. Our winter sports kept their streak rolling as the Jackson Liberty Wrestling Boys defeated our time rival Jackson Memorial 40-35 in a very intense match. An additional congratulation goes out to the team for winning B-South Division Title after defeating Point Borough in a grueling duel. Furthermore, Turgor Pasingko and Armani McCann won their respective weight classes at districts this past weekend and will be joining Turney Orso, Jordan Ajash, Sebby Nemri, and Mark Affbank at Regions this weekend hosted by our school. The boys' basketball team has been on a roll after defeating Mama 63-37, Lakewood 66-38, and Lacy 69-66, where Lucas Latif finished with a career high of 40 points. The boys' basketball team had a wonderful time when they hosted the Jackson Challenger League participants at Liberty for a scrimmage. They most importantly demonstrated the support and love for the community. NHS is having a community service project that consists of touring ESL students in areas they are struggling with. This helps foreign students adapt and get comfortable in a new environment and has been very beneficial. Many clubs are busy raising money for scholarships and events. The Class of 2025 had a fundraiser at Applebee's, shook for the and organized a Valentine's Day Chocolate Roses fundraiser. The Jackson Liberty Drama Club had a fundraiser at Luis's and Pop-Up's Pizzeria. The Vision Leaders of America members are also having their traditional Chris Winkin' Donuts fundraiser, which will conclude at the beginning of February. The Girl Soccer Team successfully held a bake sale in Chocolate Cover fundraiser this past week. Finally, the Drama Department is finishing up The Last Touches under production of Beauty in the Beast, which is set to premiere tomorrow night. It will run through this Saturday with the option for a matinee and evening performance. To help promote everyone's excitement, we're having a Beauty in the Beast Spirit Week. Tomorrow is blackout, and Team Bell or Team Beast is on Friday. If you haven't purchased your tickets yet, please go online and secure your seat right away. It's going to be a show to remember. As you can see, Liberty is staying very active. The teams, clubs, students, and staff are all working hard to make these days the best they can be. We appreciate the opportunities that we have, and thank you for your support through them all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jose, for the very informative and excellent report. Nice job. Lots of things, exciting things happening in our high schools, and I can't wait to see the play this weekend. So, moving on, this is for this evening, this is the time of the year where we do our semi-annual Violence, Vandalism, Substance Abuse, Weapon, and Hib Report. So with us this evening is our Director of Security, Ray Maluski, who is going to share with the Board the data for the first reporting period. Mr. Maluski? And the Board members may want to turn around to see the slides.
Thank you, Mrs. Pomelli. Good evening, Board President Palmieri, Vice President Cass, all of our elected Board members, and everyone in attendance this evening. The first report I'd like to present is the Violence and Vandalism Report. This is report period from September to December of 2023. Next slide. Just some background and overview information, the state of New Jersey began collecting data over 20 years ago. The objective is to collect and report incident data concerning serious student misconduct in the areas of violence, vandalism, hib, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, weapons, and substance abuse. On the far right of the screen are our totals for Report Period 1, any specific areas of violence, vandalism, hib reports investigated, weapons, and substance abuse. Total number of violence incidents for Report Period 1 was 11 compared to 10, which was reported last year. There were five incidents of vandalism reported for this reporting period compared to three last year. Same number of hib reports investigated, there were 40 for this report period, 40 last year. Weapons, there was an increase of six, as you can see up on the screen. I'll talk a little bit more about that in my report later. And substance abuse, there was a decrease in the number of substance abuse incidents for this report period compared to last year. There was a total of 41 for this reporting period, 70 last year. Regarding violence reports at our elementary school levels, down at the bottom of the screen are the totals for each of those specific incident areas, fights, simple assaults, threats, and sexual offenses. In all of those categories, the numbers were zero at our elementary level schools. Regarding hib reports that were investigated, there were a total of 17 hib incidents investigated by our elementary schools, and there is a breakdown there. Six incidents at the Crawford School, Elms had zero to report, Holman had six incidents, three at Johnson, zero at Rosenhour, two at the Switlick School. At our secondary schools, again, across the top, broken down by categories of fights, simple assaults, threats, sexual offenses. Down at the bottom are our totals for our secondary schools. There were a total of seven fights reported by all of our secondary schools, and the breakdowns. Simple assaults, there were a total of four. Threat incidents, there were zero reported. Sexual offenses, zero reported. And for hib reports investigated by our secondary schools, there were a total of 23 incidents. Vandalism and substance abuse for Report Period 1, 2023. There were a total of five incidents. There were three incidents of vandalism reported by the Jackson Memorial High School, two incidents at the Getz School. Regarding substance usage under the influence, there were a total of 20 incidents involving marijuana. Alcohol, zero. Prescription drugs, there were zero. Incidents of substances suspected, but an exam was refused, there were zero incidents reported. Regarding substance possession of marijuana, there were 19 incidents reported by our schools. Drug paraphernalia, 13. Alcohol, zero. And designer or synthetic drugs, there was one incident reported by our schools. Weapon offenses, as I mentioned earlier, there was an increase of six incidents in our schools. Those specific incidents, to break them down, to give you more specifics on it, there were a total of five incidents where students were in possession of knives. In none of those instances were those knives used to threaten any other students, or were they used for any sort of unlawful behavior. In one of those incidents, there was a BB gun that was recovered at one of our schools. The report that was given to me by the police was that that particular item was inoperable and had been inoperable for many, many years. And again, in that instance, that was reported to me by the police that that particular item was not used in a threatening manner or for any sort of unlawful purpose. Action taken by our school district for reportable violence and vandalism offenses. There were 24 incidents in which the police were notified. There were no police complaints filed. There were zero incidents in which the police were notified and complaints were filed. In-school suspensions, there were three incidents of in-school suspensions. Out-of-school suspensions, there was a total of 231 total days of suspensions that was administered in regards to our violence and vandalism offenses. Regarding impacted students, there were a total of 53 student offenders involved in these incidents. Student victims, there were a total of three. And again, there's a comparison up on the screen to last year where our numbers are at this year. As I reported last year in my report, some of the factors regarding substance use increase in our district, as you're aware, in 2021, Governor Murphy signed into law legalization of marijuana hashish for recreational use. Since then, there are 102 medicinal and recreational dispensaries actively operating in New Jersey, and the number is increasing. During my report last year, I reported there were 35. This information is available on the state of New Jersey website, NJ.gov, and it's compiled and maintained by the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission. So as you can see, in one year, there's been a dramatic increase in the number of medicinal and recreational dispensaries in the state of New Jersey. Other factors, e-cigarettes and vape products, different shapes, sizes, and styles, easy to conceal by individuals, and they're often very difficult to detect. There's various types of products out on the market that enable a user to use illicit drugs, disposable type vapes, pods, mods, boxes, pens, nicotine vapes, and so on and so forth. They're readily available to underage students. There's many, many vape shops that are out there in our communities and online sites where these products are available. In a 2022 National Youth Tobacco Survey, the most commonly used product was the e-cigarette and vape by our students. What are we doing to respond to the increased substance abuse? Continued education of our students focused on the dangers and the negative impact of the substance abuse. Increased visibility of our school security and staff supervision in our hallways and during school hours. Frequent checks of all those areas of the building throughout the day to deter substance use or vaping and possession by our students. Focus checks on our restrooms, our stairwells, and those other areas that have been identified and associated with the substance use or vaping. And a heightened awareness for our students exhibiting signs of substance use during school hours. Our teachers have been doing a very good job with their heightened awareness of identifying students who may be using or under the influence. And also, and lastly, is our information sharing between our administrators, school security, our school resource officers, and to identify concerns and deter these types of behaviors in our schools. That's the end of my report, my Violence and Vandalism Report. Be happy to take any questions. No questions. The next report I'd like to present is the Semi-Annual Report for Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying. Again, this is for Report Period 1, the period of September to December of 2023. As you know, the Jackson School District is committed to creating a safe learning environment for all of our students, investigating all the complaints of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and preventing all acts of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. On the left side of the screen is a breakdown of all of our assigned anti-bullying specialists and the schools that they're assigned to. On the right side of the screen are some of the preventative trainings that our staff members or administrators are participating in and have participated in. Some of the hib prevention training topics presented to our students during Report Period 1 were behavior expectations, conflict resolution, cyberbullying, social skills, relationship improvement, culture awareness, and implicit bias training, groups at risk for hib, victims of hib and bystanders, hib consequences. Some of our school-wide programs during that report period, Lead University was conducted at McAuliffe and the Getz Schools, Week of Respect, and School Anti-Violence Awareness Week, SEL in our classrooms, Responsive Classroom at our elementary levels, advisory periods at our middle schools, and lastly, School Climate Team Meetings at all of our schools. A breakdown at our elementary level, our hib investigations to the far right for Report Period 1. There were a total of six investigations at the Crawford School. Out of those six investigations, five of those hib complaints were founded. Elms, there were zero investigations, zero founded. The Holman School, six investigations, zero founded. Johnson, three investigations, two founded. Zero at Rosenhour, two investigations at Switlick. One of those investigations complaints was founded. At our secondary schools to the far right for Report Period 1, two investigations reported at the Getz School, zero founded. 10 investigations at McAuliffe, three of those were founded. Six investigations at Liberty, three founded. Five investigations at Memorial, zero founded. Motivation of the founded hib incidents, in nine of those incidents, appearance was the factor involved. Color in three of those incidents, race of the student in one of those, and perceived weakness, one incident was found to be a motivating factor. Location of the investigated hib incidents, 27 of these incidents occurred on school grounds. Seven incidents occurred in our school buses or at our school bus stops, and six incidents involve cell phones and the use of internet. Classification of actions of investigated hib incidents, demeaning, offensive text messages, name-calling, offensive comments, mocking, taunting, offensive comments over social media, and hitting. As you can see, many of these classification of actions are verbal in nature, the majority of them are. Outcomes of all investigated hib incidents, some of the consequences that were administered or used were parent-student conferences, out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, and detentions. Some of the remedial measures, the more common remedial measures, were counseling, seating changes, mediation, and restorative practice lessons. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation last year regarding hib complaints, we investigate everything. We do have a hib complaint submission process. Complaints can be received in person, by telephone, email, or via links located on our district website. Recently implemented in the last year or so was HIB Form 338, which provides a means for parents, guardians, or our school staff members to report an incident of hib in a confidential manner 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And in closing, all our hib complaints are promptly investigated in accordance with our District Policy 5512 regarding harassment, intimidation, and bullying of our students. That concludes my report. Be happy to take any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you give us a little example of what a school climate team meeting would look like, or who's involved, or how frequently they are?
Typically, the team consists of the principal, a teacher, the anti-bullying specialist assigned to the school, a parent of a student who is attending that particular school, and any other members that the principal, at their discretion, decides should be a part of that school climate team. Some of the things that are discussed at those meetings are the review of incidents that have occurred at the school, and discussion and ways to promote a proper climate within a school free of anti-bullying and harassment and intimidation and other issues going on at the school. So, they're constantly searching for ways to improve the climate at their schools, and a lot of the information is discussed at those school climate meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? No questions? Thank you, all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Maluski. I appreciate the comment and the question about the school climate teams too. I was going to elaborate a little bit on that as well. As you know, this work is never done. This is work that we continually do. We always strive for improvements, building up on our climate and our cultures and our buildings. Again, that work is never done. We want our students to feel as comfortable as possible to report incidents that are happening, to be upstanders in their schools. So, we really take this stuff seriously. So, thank you, and thank you for the report. Moving on with my superintendent's report this evening, I did want to just give the community an update on our 23-24 budget. We did put a communication out a few weeks ago in regards to an update with the loan. So, things are moving forward. We did receive an advancement in our state aid. The state aid that's owed to us for this whole school year is advanced to us. We're monitoring, along with the Department of Ed, our cash flow to see where we're going to and when we're going to fall short, and the amount of money that we will need for this year's budget to be able to continue to function as a school district. Simultaneously, we are working on the 24-25 school budget. We are anticipating receiving our state aid numbers within a couple of weeks, and we shall see what our S2 cut will be for the 24-25 school year. But we are slated to lose a significant amount of state aid again. Some good news is that we were notified on Friday, February 16th officially, that we will receive stabilization aid in the number of $2.1 million for this school year. That's good news. It is required of us because we have requested a loan, that that will be put towards coming off of the loan amount that we'll be asking for. So, that's good. That will lower our debt that we will need, that we will acquire, rather, with this request of the loan. So, that is some good news. We're happy to hear that, and we are appreciative that they recognize the need for that money in this district. Moving forward, I did want to point out on the agenda tonight is the official approval of our school calendar change. We had two inclement weather days, so we now have the last day of school being June 18th. Just wanted to publicly say that. It is posted on our district website. So, true to what we've been doing over the last year or so, year and a half, everyone always puts up some good happenings that are happening across the district behind me in the slides, as people can see who are watching from home or in the audience, the things that are occurring within the district on a monthly basis. So, one of the things I did want to point out, it is on our district website as well, we want to say congratulations to the ROTC and Colonel Spare, and the cadets for receiving the exceed standard rating in their program review this year. So, that's excellent news, and the program is up. We see the applications and the students who are interested in doing this from 8th grade as well, so we're happy to report that it's a continually growing program as well. So, congratulations to all of them. I also wanted to point out some of the information again in the slides tonight. Coming up in March, we have a couple of wonderful things that are happening. We have a Trade and Job Fair and also a Wellness Fair. So, I did ask Mr. Palumbo, who is working with staff to oversee both of those programs, to just let the Board know about those happenings. It's very exciting sessions that we're going to be hosting and open to the community.
Yes, thank you. Oh, wow, sorry. Yeah, so, the first fair, I want to make sure that our community has access to resources and easily accessible. So, on March 13th, from 6:00 to 7:30, right here in the Liberty, I'm in the Memorial atrium, we're going to have a Mental Health Wellness Resources Fair. So, we'll have, if you ever ask your question, how do I get my child, you know, some help or counseling, or, you know, where can they go for a gym membership or yoga, therapy dogs, all these really great mental health and wellness resources are going to be on hand in our atrium, set up in a fair style, so open to the community. That's March 13th from 6:00 to 7:30. And then, I'm really excited that we're hosting our first Trade and Jobs Fair on March 21st at the Jackson Liberty High School Main Gym. We're going to have over 30 representatives from trade schools, apprenticeship programs, employers, the US military, all career certificate programs, all career pathways that do not require a four-year college degree. It'll give our community the opportunity, and students the opportunity, to interface with representatives from all those different career pathways. Again, it's open to the community, so, you know, we're looking for former grads that are looking for maybe a new career pathway, grownups, kids, middle school kids, anybody that wants to interface and learn more about other career pathways that do not require a four-year college degree. So, really excited about that. We have unions coming out, apprenticeship programs, like I said. So, it's really an exciting opportunity for our community, for our students. So, thank you guys so much for letting us do that.
Excuse me, Mr. Palumbo, what was the date on the trade fair?
Yes, March 21st.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo. Very exciting. I'm really looking forward to both of them. We've been so interested in doing a Trade and Job Fair for years, so, excellent. We're looking forward to that. I just wanted to point it out again, I know that the high school board reps spoke about the high school upcoming plays, but I do encourage community members, bring your friends, your neighbors, your relatives, these plays are always phenomenal. They really are top-quality performances. So, I encourage you, buy some tickets, come out, see them, grab some folks that you know, and join out. There's nothing like the performers to see a full audience. So, encourage you, please come out. Just some other happenings in the month of January and the beginning of February, many of our elementary schools held soup or bowls, food donations, they collected cans of soup and other canned items, and gave lots and lots of food and donated it to local, you know, food pantries. So, it was excellent community service that they held. Another thing I just wanted to point out that I thought was just super kind, an excellent way to help some of our senior citizens, the Rosenhour students decorated notes of love for the residents of three assisted living facilities. So, I can imagine how wonderful it was for them to see some of those Valentines that they received. So, I want to thank everybody who's been involved in all of these wonderful happenings across the district. And with that, that concludes my superintendent's report this evening. Mr. Palmieri, turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Pomelli. At this time, we will have our standing committees report, any committee that met from the last board meeting until now. So, Buildings and Grounds Chairperson, Mr. McCarron, please report.
Yes, some district projects that were completed. HVAC work was completed in Memorial, Switlick, and Elm Schools. A coil was replaced, a new unit installed for Memorial Kitchen Freezer B, which is an outside unit. Memorial Field House Hot Water Heater was replaced. There was a new control board that was installed at Getz Boiler, and Getz Water Project is moving along as scheduled. Memorial Fuel Depot Project... Project is now completed.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron. Budget and Finance, I am the chair. This committee focused primarily on ways to generate more revenue for the school district, uh, focused primarily on various ways to increase revenue to the district, which included a number of items that, uh, have been moved forward for approval on tonight's agenda. They include the SDA Emergent Needs Grant, which is a little over, uh, $188,000. That's Finance Number 7. The, that will support the paving project at Memorial Transportation Depot, roof repairs at Jackson Memorial High School, HVAC control unit at Jackson Liberty High School, the use of Title I Carryover Funds from 2022, 2023, in the amount of $347,000. That's Program Number 7. It's going to support us with the offsetting health benefit cost of Title I staff, roughly the amount of $108,000. Utilizing surplus funds from insurance, aggregate excess loss contingency fund in the amount of roughly $95,000. That's Finance Number 8. RFP for naming rights of Jackson Liberty High School Football Stadium, Jackson Memorial High School, and Jackson Liberty High School Fine Arts Centers, and Jackson Liberty High School Gymnasium. You'll find that in Finance Number 5. Facility rental rate, uh, is increasing, revised Regulation 7510, and that's Facilities Number 2. Childcare rate increase for 2024, 2025, you'll find that in Programs 21. Athletic participation fee increase for 2024, 2025, you will find that located in Programs Number 19. The committee also discussed the, uh, expected state cuts anticipated again this coming year. Uh, we anticipated stabilization aid from the state and the status of the district's pending loan from the state. And we met, uh, in January. It was, uh, Mr. McCarron, Ms. Cass, Ms. Primili, Mr. Boginsky, and myself, and we will be meeting again Tuesday, February 27th. We now have a report from Transportation, Chairperson, Ms. Barokas.
Hi, everyone. Um, so, the Transportation Committee met on January 31st. It's myself, Mr. Palmieri, and Mrs. Cass. In attendance was Mr. Boginsky, Mrs. Primili, and Mr. Soto. So, we discussed the processing of the B-7T forms for the January 31st payment. Um, we're also in the process of looking at the B-6T forms for the 2024, 2025 eligibility, and that deadline was March, the deadline is March 15th. Um, we also were, we also, the Board of Ed evaluates the bids in accordance with New Jersey contract law. Um, also, we looked at, uh, I don't know if people have read, but there was, uh, a new state law regarding consortiums, and that's working across districts, and I have an update on that. The district will be contracting with the LSDA, the Lakewood Student Transportation Authority, for the non-public transportation for the 2024, 2025 school year, and that will be, um, on the rest of our agenda. Um, we also had a timeline for the transition to Traversa. It's the new updated transportation software. Uh, that'll be coming forth in, uh, on, in April. Uh, we looked at the training on the use of Versatrans for the enrollment committee. Uh, we also discussed the purchase of school buses, uh, I'm sorry, the lease purchase of school buses. Uh, we discussed the electric school bus grant, and let me just remind everyone, we did one, we did win the grant in the first round, but now more money was added to that grant. So, to get to the actual cost of electric, electric school buses, because we won that grant a few years back, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we, it also happens to be the, uh, bus driver and van aides are in contract negotiation this year, so we'll be discussing that. Um, we looked at some potential cost savings ideas, but no decisions have been made. We are also looking into potential revenue sources, uh, which would help with our budget, um, opening a training program that is open to other districts. We discussed that. We also looked into the ESY and summer transportation, and also route developments for the 2024, 2025 school year. Our next meeting, we haven't decided on a date yet.
Thank you, Ms. Barokas. We also have ad hoc committees that meet as needed. State and county school board representative, Ms. Rivera, please report.
Yes, the next county meeting will be March 25th at 6 o'clock at Thames River Intermediate East. The topic will be the eighth grade dialogue.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Advocacy committee, Chairperson, Ms. Gardella, please report.
Good evening. The advocacy committee met yesterday. Um, and members in attendance was Ms. Rivera, Ms. Primili, and myself. Uh, things that we discussed, we reviewed, um, Assembly Bill 1286 and 1282, uh, for consideration of public resolution at our next board meeting. The committee agreed to support with the Public Resolution Bill A126, which has the state cover 100% of non-public transportation costs if a district meets outlined criteria. However, there was a concern discussed in the long term that the district may not meet the criteria. Therefore, we would suggest the criteria to include if the non-public transportation costs are 50% or higher of the public school population, um, transportation would be 100% funded by the Department of Education. The committee agreed to support with the Public Resolution Bill A1282, which covers 100% of the special education costs for both in-district and out-of-district students. Currently, the state covers 75% after the district reaches a per-student educational threat, threshold. Um, the committee discussed, uh, a Senate bill, it's 2343, which allows us two districts to raise the 2% tax levy cap in order to fill the state funding void. At this point, the committee agreed that we cannot advocate on behalf of this bill, as the local constituents voted against this very solution in November. Um, the Senate Bill 2343 puts the fiscal responsibility to the local taxpayer, and the committee would like to advocate for funding changes at the state level. We also discussed areas within our budget where increased funding would be beneficial to the district. This was multi-language learners and security. We discussed, um, holding meetings with Assemblymen Zouiki, Senator Gopal, and Senator Hall. We also discussed meeting with three or four Jackson residents to educate them on our vision and goal, get insights, and develop some action plans to include the greater community, as well as connecting with other district advocacy committees, as it was brought to our attention that there are several districts right now, um, advocating who have been cut from state funding. So, we're hoping that we can get together for some S2 push. Um, so our next business, I might have skipped over that, was obviously to schedule a meeting with, um, Assemblymen Zouiki and at least one senator, invite and schedule a meeting with selected Jackson residents, reach out via email to other district advocacy committees, develop a plan of action for advocating for a revised school funding formula that includes our own residents, other towns, and speaking at the State Board of Education meetings. We don't have a meeting date, um, but I'm sure we'll have an update next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Gardella. I need a motion for approval of policy first reading revised.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of regulations adoption.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes, the official board meeting, January 3rd, 2024 reorganization meeting, the closed session meeting, January 17th, 2024, and the official board meeting, January 17th, 2024, business meeting.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for all other questions. This public forum will be for questions on agenda items only.
Motion. Second.
Please sign in and state the, your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard. All right.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Rania Heisham-Hassi. I live in Jackson. I'm a resident here for the past 10 years. Uh, my children go to school here in Jackson. I have one in elementary, one in Memorial here. Uh, I have multiple questions, comments, concerns. Many are regarding the monitor.
Ma'am, this is just for agenda items only?
Okay.
Okay, monitor questions we could take. It's on the agenda.
Okay. So, here as a Jackson Township taxpayer citizen, with a newly appointed monitor with a hefty salary, what, have you reviewed the budget before? I assume so. You know the details, and what are your plans? Have you found any red flags? Have you found any concerns? Why?
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry. Just, you have to address me, the president.
Sorry. Okay. Uh, so, were there any red flags in our finances for our educational system? Why do we need a monitor with a hefty salary, which the citizens are responsible for paying?
I can say that the Jackson School District has been under S2 funding formula for the last six years, which we've had $18 million of our funding removed. The state of New Jersey has removed that from our funding. Uh, with that, um, we've had an audit, auditors, met, two different auditors come in, and our audits have been very clean. Uh, this, the Ocean County Superintendent has also reviewed our spending, and they have been very clear that we do not have a spending problem. We have a revenue problem, and that revenue problem is caused by the state of New Jersey's S2 funding formula. So, that's why we now need to borrow some more, uh, of our own money back. And with that comes a state monitor, uh, appointed by the Department of Education. Ms. Primili, would you like to add anything to that?
Yep, no, thank you. Um, I just want to let you know that it is state statute that requires that. Any school district that borrows money, it's required, um, for a state monitor to be assigned. So, we have, yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, that's okay.
Okay. Um, so I understand, not really. The formula is really complex. I don't understand it at all. I do get a slight gist of it, but I'm not sure. It seems not fair as a citizen to have my taxes increased, and my child, my children in their classrooms and their schools are losing programs and benefits. And so, I'm paying more but getting less, just to keep it simpler.
Yeah, and, and you're going to see, uh, in this agenda, we actually are supporting a bill, 3589, that is sponsored by Assemblyman Zouiki, and that bill is actually, uh, asking for the state to pay for any state monitor within the state of New Jersey. Um, so, I will discuss more of that when we get to finance. I'm going to actually have a, a statement on that. Um, but I, but I, I hear you.
Yes, so that makes me a little bit happier. Thank you for that.
I'd also like just to comment for a second. Um, we, for six years now, have been talking about the cuts that have happened through the legislation of S2 and the funding formula. We've done lots of things. I think, hopefully, you've seen those communications. You've seen the advocating we've done, the informing, testifying at assembly meeting, budget meetings. Um, we have done campaigns of letter writing, postcard writing. Um, you know, we've done a lot to address that, including we were part of a lawsuit to try and under, better understand that formula. So, there are lots of things that the school district has done. Um, you know, with losing the state funding, it was a perfect storm scenario. In the beginning, when S2 first came, came to be, we did lose enrollment significantly, so it made sense to lose funding. But there was this line that got crossed about the third year where we started to see and anticipate this coming, um, and tried to be protective, tried to inform everybody, including our legislators, of what was happening here. It's a perfect storm scenario, especially with inflation, right? So, in this current year's budget, instead of the programs that you're referencing of being cut any deeper, we've cut significantly and did not want to take it any further, because it would have drastically affected students. Hence, we met with our county superintendent and requested the loan. So, that was to avoid having to cut any more programs.
Okay. Uh, in my youngest child's school, there is a great influx of Spanish-speaking students with no one to communicate properly or teach them English, and we have not had a public morning announcement speaker for some time, because Ms. Hogan is being shared between schools. Um, also, my oldest child that's here in Memorial had, when he was in Johnson, he, he was able to learn Spanish as a second language. That's no longer the case. My younger child doesn't have that. And that's just bits and pieces of things that one child had six years ago, and this one doesn't. Uh, and as, in regards to the safety concerns, those numbers are kind of ha- high. So, how are we addressing it appropriately, still with not the proper staff? I'm over my time. Sorry.
So, I'm going to encourage you to reach out to my office tomorrow, and I'd be happy to speak further on details of such. Um, you know, yes, things have, have been affected. You know, as I said, over, over the years of constantly being cut.
I just wanted to say it on record.
I'm sorry?
I understand. I just wanted to state it on record.
Gotcha.
Because it is a concern.
Of course. Yep, but feel free to, to give me a call tomorrow, and I'd be happy to, to go over things with you a little bit more detail.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your questions and, and your passion. I wish we could fill this whole auditorium up with more people that really have that passion. So, thank you.
I think you guys are doing a great job.
May I just say one thing, just because I saw you came with notes and you were prepared and everything to speak today. So, if there's other things that you want to say on record, there is a second forum to ask questions that are not on things on the agenda, so you could finish.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to say as well, uh, many of us on the board, all of us, uh, have children in the district, so we have the same concerns that you do, and that's why we're up here.
I appreciate you all.
Are there any additional agenda-only questions? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for action. All right, I need a motion to move Finance.
Motion. Second.
I'm going to open up for discussion. I will say I do have a good bit of discussion on Finance. I'd like to just first, uh, highlight Finance Number 10, if I can just give an overview for those who are listening and who are here. Uh, on tonight's agenda, it includes a vote to potentially approve a resolution to publicly support Bill A3589, sponsored by Assemblyman Alex Zouiki. That provides the salary and other costs associated with the Commissioner of Education's appointment of a state monitor, and other staff will be paid by state as well. The Jackson School District acknowledges that the current New Jersey law that requires a monitor to be appointed to the, a school district has requested a loan from the Department of Education. The Jackson Township School District has lost $18 million in state aid through a six-year S2 school funding legislation. In response, the Jackson Township School District was forced to reduce its budget by 215 staff members. The extraordinary growth of Jackson Township non-public students, uh, base far exceeds the district's budgeting capacity and has created a significant challenge to our resources and finances, uh, in transportation and personnel resources. Uh, the district believes that the expense of a Department of Education monitor should be paid, uh, for, by the Department of Education, and therefore supports Bill A3589. And if I could also just add, Ms. Gardella, Mr. McCarron, and myself were with Assemblyman Zouiki at the State House when he submitted Bill A3589. We are in complete support of this bill. I firmly believe that if the state of New Jersey wants to mandate and appoint a state monitor, then the state of New Jersey should pay for those mandates. monitor, then the state of New Jersey should pay for those mandates and appointments. Any other discussion on finance?
Am I on? Regarding Bill A 3589, I heard that it had a very good bipartisan support in the Senate, and it'll be introduced to the Assembly next week, so it's really exciting. Thank you for your hard work on that.
All right, while I'm at it, I do have some more discussion, I wanted to give anyone else a chance here. Finance Number 4, before I vote on Finance Number 4, and this has nothing to do with our state monitor, Ms. Morris, however, I find it completely unfair and unnecessary that the state of New Jersey appoints a state monitor to oversee the district for a problem they created. Let me be clear, the Jackson School District has never had a spending problem. Anyone who has reviewed our spending, including the Ocean County Superintendent and multiple auditing firms, have agreed that we are spending responsibly. We have a revenue problem, and that problem has been caused by the governor of New Jersey with the disastrous S2 cuts. The governor has reduced our state aid to the point where we now need to borrow some of that money back, which has resulted in a monitor. It's incredibly unfair. For some good news, though, I would like to close my portion of discussion for finance before we go to a vote, with Finance Number 13, which was recently added to our addendum. I would like to acknowledge that this, that Finance Number 13 is a generous donation to the district of desks and chairs from Next Level Real Estate School. Its CEO and instructor is Ms. Kuhn, who is actually here in the audience today, so thank you, Ms. Kuhn. We appreciate that. This donation will positively impact our students, so thank you very much. Any other discussion on finance? Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Plomary?
Yes. I need a motion to move facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Plomary?
Yes. I need a motion to move programs.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Am I on? Number 19. I just wanted to hear from, I guess that was really the Finance Committee, regarding how come the minimum maximum family cap wasn't raised with everything else, what was the thought process behind that?
What was the question, I'm sorry, repeat it?
So number 19, I don't mean to yell, it was the increase of athletic and co-curricular participation rates for 24-25. We raised the athletic fee from 75 to 100, the activity fee from 35 to 50, but we kept the maximum family cap the same. I was just curious on how that came to be.
Mr. Beginsky, would you?
Sure. So when we decided to raise the participation fee, specifically for one student, we didn't want to overly impact us, any one family, so that they would have to maybe forced to make a decision where one child would play and another child, they'd be like, ooh, maybe we shouldn't play if we raised that too high. So we wanted to keep the family maximum to be the same, so families wouldn't have to make as tough of a decision like that.
Any additional discussion on programs? Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Plomary?
Yes. I need a motion to move students.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Plomary?
Yes. I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Plomary?
Yes. I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Plomary?
Yes. I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Ms. Barokas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Okay, under Personnel 14, GG is a no, and under 16A is a no. Everyone else, everything else a yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Okay, under Personnel 14, since there seems to be a lack of data for all of the Jackson Memorial High School recommendations, I am going to abstain from all of the Jackson Memorial High School recommendations, and I am saying yes to all of the others.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Plomary?
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard.
Hello. Would I just put my address? Hi, I'm here on a couple different things. I'm here as a resident. I think you guys are doing an amazing job, I definitely want to come to more meetings. I'm also the liaison as a council president, and also as the owner of the school that just donated. The desks and the chairs, it's, it is an honor and I was happy to donate it, but it was also bittersweet, just as I think it kind of fits because it was a school, it was a different type of school, it was a real estate school, as you were saying, people that go there, they do not, it's, you know, it's high school education. Unfortunately, I fought the state for a very long time to not allow, to stop brick and mortar in the education process of my school. Now it's done online, so unfortunately, students can't come to my brick and mortar because they would rather them sit in front of a laptop and get a license that is going to one day possibly sell your home, your biggest investment. It really, really was upsetting to me, but I'm happy that, you know, I was able to donate that stuff to the school that I went to. And then secondly, as a council member, council president, that sets the agenda, just like you guys do, I'm here to say that I plan on supporting the Board of Education in their support of the Alex Suiki, Assemblyman Suiki's bill, and it will be on the next meeting for the council to vote. I will be speaking with them and hopefully having their 5-0 on that, so thank you guys, keep it up.
Thank you, Council President Kuhn, thank you for the donation and the support.
I'm not sure if this is the correct moment to ask this question, but I hear about redistricting Moving students from schools?
I can address that.
Okay.
So we currently have a board enrollment committee that is studying the enrollment trends. We've had a few meetings, we have made no decisions about redistricting, it's just a committee that is watching enrollment and looking at our numbers. We do have some schools that have, are highly attended, large numbers, so we're just reviewing and looking at those numbers right now, but there's been no recommendations moved forward or anything. If we were going to make any of those recommendations, it would be very public.
Okay, thank you. That was all.
Thank you for your question.
Just don't get too close because it's really loud at ours.
Good evening, my name is Mordechai Bernstein. I just, I'm sorry I came late to the meeting, I had a meeting in the county, but I also did notice on the agenda, Finance, add a motion number 12, which is a motion to, I guess, contract with the LSTA. As a parent of a private school child who's been at multiple meetings in the past, when you've had hundreds of parents here, I think it's a major step in the right direction that will hopefully ensure more children are able to get on buses, safe buses. Safety is obviously the key over here, hopefully reliable buses, and hopefully it will be a learning process for everyone, but hopefully it will be a process that will go smoothly. So first I want to thank you. As a council member, I also want to take a moment to think and look forward to continuing to work together with the district, getting more buses on the roads in safe, reliable ways, having one address that we could contact when there are issues, and I think that will be something that we'll all be very proud of. So lots of luck to everyone involved, and hopefully it'll be a wonderful year, '24, '25, next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any additional questions or comments?
I forgot to ask something because I heard LSD buses before. So the LSD buses, along with other buses that are not Jackson School District buses, are habitually speeding. Will this be addressed somehow, somewhere?
So, oh, I don't know if that was me or you. So anybody that we contract with, we obviously follow up with them if there's any kinds of reports made, but in the event if you are seeing or hearing of any speeding, we encourage you to call our police department first and then notify us and we can follow up with the contractor as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. We'll now turn to board comments, starting with Mr. McCarron.
I was able to attend, as already mentioned, the signing of Assembly Bill Number A 3589 with Assemblyman Alex Suiki. I appreciate his support for our schools, and I hope that that bill gets passed, making it the state's responsibility to pay for the monitor. Wish everybody a good night and thank you.
Thank you all for coming out, I agree with you, 100% hope this bill passes, and thank you all for coming out.
Thank you all for attending in person and live stream, for the informative presentations and inquiries. Thank you, Ms. Kuhn, for your generous donations to the district, everyone have a wonderful night.
I just wanted to say, even though Jose left, that I was very impressed with this report from Liberty, especially when he was discussing the positive climate and culture. It's so important for our students and I wanted to applaud him for bringing that up. I also wanted to thank the staff member who's volunteering to be the advisor for the environmental club. Having created my own recycling club as a young student, I think that's great, and I think that our Board of Education is doing great things, and I appreciate our Jackson Education Foundation and all of our community members that are involved here tonight, so thank you.
I wanted to thank everyone who came this evening and those that are watching online. I am looking forward to seeing many of you at our two upcoming plays. We're seeing Beauty and the Beast at Liberty and Mary Poppins at Memorial, so if you see me in the audience, please come up and introduce yourself. And also on April 11th, the Jackson Education Foundation is having a senior senior prom. Even though we, there isn't, there wasn't age put on there, it's really, we really just want the community to come out and join us, it's a great event, it's going to be held at Liberty High School, and it's really just a community event to raise funds, to give grants and scholarships back to our children. So I know I'm going to be there, and I haven't turned that age yet, so, and I hope to see many others as well, so please join us on April 11th, and thank you for this evening.
I just want to thank everyone for coming, and I want to also thank Ms. Kuhn for her generous donation. We also received an anonymous donation to pay for the home and lunch balance, so that's always fabulous when something like that happens. My sentiments are the same as everyone at this table regarding Bill 3589, I think it's absolutely ridiculous that the state is forcing us to pay for something that they're mandating, and the fact that they put us in the position, so all the way around, I hope this bill gets passed. I do encourage everyone to go out and see our two plays, our productions are always amazing, they're fantastic. And also the senior prom, I'm going to piggyback on what Ally said, I will be there as well.